Good evening. I would like to call to order the June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, City of Calabasas Special Council Meeting. I am joined tonight by Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, Council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as our city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication public comment. When you are called to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by our communications director, Michael Russo.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Right hand over your heart. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Tonight, I would like to start our meeting with a presentation to our communications director, Michael Russo, for his years of service for the city. Today, it is with great pride and a touch of sadness that I stand before you to announce the retirement of our esteemed communications director, Michael Russo. Michael has been an integral part of Southern California Communications, dedicating thirty-four years to informing and connecting our citizens with vital local information. Before joining our city, Michael had a sixteen-year tenure in local news television. As a reporter, anchor, and associate producer, he honed his storytelling skills, captivating audiences across screens. Later, he transitioned to the public sector, serving as the County of San Diego's multimedia manager for eighteen impactful years. His extensive expertise has made him a brain trust for local media and communications. Michael's contributions extend beyond our city's borders. He has served on the Board of Directors of Natoa, right? Did I say that right? And scanned Natoa, leaving a special mark on the industry. His leadership has also led to countless local programming awards, including an impressive collection of five Emmy Awards. Five years ago, on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Michael assumed the role of our Media and Information Services Director. Recognizing the evolving landscape of information dissemination, he spearheaded the transformation of our department into the Communications Department, which emphasized disaster and emergency notifications, amplified public engagement through social media, and streamlined city website for efficient service delivery. During the challenging times of the COVID-19 pandemic, Michael's unwavering commitment shone brightly. He ensured that public meetings continued seamlessly, even as we all adapted to the virtual world via Zoom. Additionally, he helped pioneer the mayor's newsletter, a cherished channel of communication eagerly anticipated by our constituents each week. As you embark on this new chapter, know that your impact will resonate for years to come. We wish you a joyful retirement, filled with well-deserved relaxation, adventure, and perhaps a few more Emmy-worthy stories. I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to Michael's son, Sean, and his wife, Karen, whose support to Michael has been invaluable during his tenure. A special thanks to Karen is also deserved for her service at Chaparral Elementary School. Finally, I'd like to say thank you, Michael, for your service and your unwavering commitment to our community. May your retirement be as remarkable as the career you've crafted. I'd like to turn to my colleagues for comments. Ed?
I'll be happy to. Now, when I read this on the agenda tonight, it said for years of service. I think it should have said years and years and years. It felt like it was always here. It's going to be a loss not having you here. It's just, we expect it. And I don't think you got the memo that all retirements have been postponed for a while. So, you know, sorry to give you the news. But, you know, we really appreciate it in so many levels. The communication during emergencies, support for announcements, general agenda items. It was just a standard operating procedure. We expected it. It was articulated beautifully. So, wish you the best. I wish you every best. And I know you're going to enjoy it and make the most of it.
David?
Thank you, and thanks to your family for being here and for supporting you and protecting the Cubbies over at Chaparral as well. But truly, there's a song for San Francisco. I left my heart in San Francisco. Yours is, "I left my heart in San Diego." And at least you're getting to go back there, I understand. So, again, you've been a pleasure to work with and torment with robots and cell service and broadband issues. But your work has been tremendous. It has been a pleasure to have you here in the city and to lead our communications department. And you will be sorely missed. And I will always recall and remember you, of course, as the golden voice. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you and the whole family.
Peter?
The golden voice, that was it, right? I joined the council in two thousand and twenty, and we were all on Zoom then. And the only way that I could associate the City of Calabasas was with Michael Russo's voice, that signature sound that started off all of our council meetings. I'm going to miss that. I'm going to miss that a lot. Also, as the Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sad to say that I'm going to have to write my own letters next year. Is that right?
I write them.
Wow. I'm going to miss you more than anybody for just that reason. No, but seriously, you've been a valuable asset to our city. We're going to miss you a lot. Thank you for all of your contributions. Thank you for setting such a great example. And, you know, your communication staff has done well under you. And I'm sure they'll carry that forward with all the great things that you've taught us. Thank you.
James?
Yes, well, Peter, you know, if you really miss that voice, you can always play the reruns of his golden voice. Yes, Michael, you do bring a special talent to the administration of the air department. And I've enjoyed working with you these last several years. I was saddened to hear that you were leaving. I couldn't believe it. I'm like, wow, that was fairly quick. It seems like a lot of that was spent, as we mentioned, during the COVID-19 pandemic. That kind of went by, and it really wasn't a full time here. But I appreciate everything you've done for the city. Of note, you know, you revamped the website. You revamped the look of the communications department, which is, you know, I think in need of a fresh pair of eyes when you came in. And I liked a lot of what was being done. But it's always good to have another opinion. And you and I talked many times about some of the changes that were made. And I think that we kept a good combination of the old and the new. And I appreciate, you know, your staff development as well. So, thank you for your service, and you're always welcome back here.
I just want to add that it's been such a pleasure to work with you. I feel like in the time we've worked together, a lot has happened. I remember when I first heard the news about the helicopter crash and that Kobe was on it, I called you right away, and you're like, "Do you think I should come into City Hall?" I'm like, "I think we both need to." And we didn't even realize what was going to be in front of us. And then, again, when the city was going to shut down with COVID, and we were here again on a weekend, you know, figuring out messaging, and every news story that involves Calabasas, you know, you're always my first call. And then whenever there's a power outage, you're also my first call. So, you get a lot of my first calls. And working on the mayor's letter and just really making sure our community stays informed. I'm so truly grateful for the opportunity to have worked together. And I know you've done such a great job empowering and working with your staff. So, I know you're leaving us in very good hands. But I just wanted to say thank you for everything, for your accessibility, and for always being so responsive to our residents. That's something so important. When people lose power, they don't have cellphone service, and they write to Michael. He always reaches out and tries to get answers. We do the best that we can, but you're always so responsive to our residents. So, thank you so much. And I just wish you and your family the best in this next chapter. Do you want to say anything?
Wow. Thank you very, very much. I remember standing right here in this spot five years ago, almost to the day. You welcomed me to the City of Calabasas after, you mentioned, eighteen years at the County of San Diego and sixteen years as a news reporter in San Diego before that. But it is time to return home for this new chapter in our lives. I mentioned the night in two thousand and nineteen when you welcomed me. And that night, I've mentioned how I've been very blessed and very lucky everywhere I've worked in my career. And that continued during my time here. I want to thank my wife of thirty-six years, Karen, our son, Sean, for being here tonight. It means so much. In these five years, the communications department went through a lot together. We had some major city leadership changes, of course, COVID, as was mentioned, wildfires, floods, even a tropical storm. But we've celebrated a lot of victories. As mentioned, we've won a ton of awards, even twice being named the top small-city government multimedia group in the United States. Five different State of the City addresses, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, just a ton of video stories, lots of graphics, a rebuilt website from the ground up, et cetera. So, Arvin, Tony, Ryan, Jason Mear, Carlo, Greg, and the person who holds the department together, Yadira. And before them, Bob, Lyle, Jason Robinson, Molly, Rachel, Carson, and Andy. We did a lot of good things together. And I expect that to continue under Scott's leadership. To members of the Communications and Technology Commission, Michael, Candace, Carrie, Kartik, and David, and our student commissioners, we worked together to come up with a new film ordinance, a new wireless ordinance that I know one day will bear fruit. So, we will actually have that one phone call, Alicia, that you can keep driving from one part of the city to the other. But I'm going to take with me something I didn't really expect and what I wanted to say. And that is the spirit of the people of Calabasas has really impressed me. I have met so many people who get involved in this community, so many people. And it's so inspirational to me, especially as I move into this retirement chapter of my life. And you know the names. Michael Brockman, Carol Davis, Dennis Washburn, Charlotte Meyer, Richard Sherman, and countless others. They don't have to do this. It's certainly not for the money. And they do it to give back to their community. And that spirit of community is something that I'm really going to take with me. With communications, we're one of those departments that serves residents, obviously. But we also serve internal customers of the department. So, I want to thank my fellow department heads who were with me tonight. At the end of the day, our goal here is to inspire confidence in residents that their tax dollars are being spent wisely. You know, tonight, we're talking about the city's budget. And, you know, residents can be confident that their tax dollars are being spent wisely because this organization, the people in front of me, the people to the right of me, are all very aware that the money does not belong to them. It belongs to residents, belongs to the people. So, thank you for all you've given me these five years, your guidance, your leadership, your sense of humor. And next time you're in San Diego, stop by and we'll grab some lunch. All right? Thank you for everything.
Michael, don't go too far. We have a plaque to present to you. So, if the council and Kindon, we can all come down. Oh, of course. And I neglected to turn to Kindon, so I will turn to him now.
Thank you, mayor. Michael, we, as an executive team, have really appreciated working with you. You're a wonderful friend and a colleague. I reached out to the executive team and asked them to put a few words together that really, you know, sum up our relationship and how we've worked together. Let me just share. I won't read all of the sentences, but they talked about how trustworthy that you were. That came up over and over again, how much they distrusted you and how much we've enjoyed that diligence that you bring to the work. You're dependable. You're a pleasure to work with, always willing to assist. You do so with a smile and a delightful sense of humor. One of the executive members, team, said he shunned the spin and focused on accuracy. And we saw that over and over again, especially as we navigated different emergencies and learned how to use those tools available, and that you were ethical, accurate, and timely in all of those messages. And you'll be sorely missed from the executive team. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kindon. Going to move on to public comment. I have one speaker card. Mark Levinson. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? If anyone does, you can just fill out a card.
Thank you, Mark Levinson. I live in Los Angeles. I'm the immediate past chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And first, of course, I want to acknowledge Michael and all he's done and his friendship to everyone throughout. And Michael, you're a super guy. And enjoy your retirement, your family as well. Because we all know how much the families give up when someone is as dedicated as Michael is. And the time that he spends with us, he's not spending with them. And I also want to announce tomorrow, Chamber's breakfast is at Lovey's. The speaker will be talking about AI. So, it's a topic that everyone wants to know about. Please attend. Welcome. You'll be welcome there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. We're going to move on to our consent items. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull the consent item?
Do we do announcements?
No, wait. Oh, sorry, I missed our council announcements. We will go back to that. I will start with you, James.
I just, well, all I want to announce, I did want to tell the public that we're honored this week to play host to America in Bloom. We are in a competition, a nationwide competition, for our greenery. And we have some judges, two judges from the National Organization coming. And they're actually here now. And we will be taking them around to show them the beautiful landscaping in Calabasas and how we maintain our city and hope to bring home some awards.
Thank you, James. Peter?
Thank you. I have two things to announce. First of all, tomorrow night, June twentieth, from six to nine P.M., we are hosting the Calabasas Cuisine, an array of food trucks and other exciting activities at our Calabasas Community Center. A lot of activities geared towards teens, but I'm pretty sure the food trucks are accessible to people of all ages. So, come on out and join us. The other announcement is that a week from today, the seniors editor is celebrating eight years. And so, we're having a birthday party. There'll be bingo and ice cream. More details can be found on the City of Calabasas website.
Thanks, Peter. David?
Mine have been covered. Thank you.
Ed?
No, my announcements have already been made. Irrelevant.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge that today is Juneteenth. And it's important that we acknowledge that today is a federal holiday that commemorates the day in eighteen sixty-five when two hundred and fifty thousand black slaves were freed in the state of Texas by the U.S. Army. It's hard to imagine, but these individuals did not receive their freedom in eighteen sixty-three, when the Emancipation Proclamation took effect. It's such a dark part of our nation's history that it's really important that we continue to talk about things and learn from them and recognize that today is a holiday. And even though we're having a meeting tonight, that it was not intended that way. It really was an oversight when we looked at our calendar. And I'll be asking later on that we consider making Juneteenth a City of Calabasas holiday, like some of our other local communities have done. But I was pleased that our library has some books on display. And it's just important that we continue to acknowledge what happened in history so that history does not repeat itself. So, thank you so much. Now, I'm going to move on to consent items. Thanks for the catch, James. Do any of my colleagues? Okay. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull the consent item? So, I don't have any speaker cards. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? No. Ed? I'm just going to vote on this real quick. Do you want to just come to the mic real quick? May I have a motion to approve consent item number one?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just wanted to make sure you were on the record. Now, we're going to move on to new business. Our first item is consideration of a proposed ordinance of the City of Calabasas to protect open space in the city by requiring two-thirds voter approval of development on lands designated open space resource protection, OSRP, by the land use map of the Calabasas General Plan, with certain exceptions. City Manager Kindon Meek and City Attorney Matt Summers will make the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to start off. And I'm joined by Kindon Meek, also by our outside counsel, Sunny Sultani, with Elshon Winter. So, as you know, Calabasas voters in the city council have long protected open space, including by adopting Measure D in two thousand and five to require two-thirds voter approval before any land designated OSRP, OSR, or PFR in the general plan could be re-designated to a non-open space land use. In two thousand and fifteen, the council asked, and the voters overwhelmingly approved Measure O, to remove the sunset date of Measure D, making those protections permanent. And in an effort to enhance the city's open space protections, the council directed the Open Space Preservation Task Force to look at opportunities to strengthen the open space ordinance to improve its preservation of open space areas, particularly natural, undisturbed, unaltered habitat areas, and promote their protection. So, the existing ordinance prohibits the general plan amendment that re-designates OS, Open Space Recreational, OSR, Open Space Resource Protection, OSRP, or Public Facilities Recreational for non-open space uses, subject to certain limitations absent voter approval. The proposed ordinance under consideration, which Ms. Sultani will go into, would expand that prohibition to also definitively prohibit development in areas that are designated Open Space Resource Protection, with some exceptions. So, what we have before you is a proposed ordinance and a path forward for bringing that to consideration to the council and then eventually the voters. With that, I'll turn to Ms. Sultani.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing our office to be of service and to go over your options with respect to your protection of your open space with you. We have a PowerPoint to keep the dialogue focused. By way of background, Calabasas current municipal code, Section seventeen point sixteen oh three, prohibits changing general plan land use designations from open space OSR and Open Space Resources Protection, OSRP, or Public Facilities Recreational, PFR, to any non-open space uses unless there's a two-thirds voter approval. There are limited exceptions. The ordinance, however, fails to protect open space from potentially harmful developments, such as grading or habitat modification for projects that are still considered open space uses under the current code. And as the council is aware, and there's been litigation on it, it's subject to interpretation that the definition of development may not include activities such as those stated here. The city formed a open space task force. We were brought in as special counsel. We have had two subcommittee meetings. And out of those discussions, a proposed ordinance will be discussed with you tonight. The proposed ordinance by no means means to be the final version of the ordinance. The task force recommendation will be for this, a version of this ordinance to be introduced to the public and for it to have workshops and further dialogue and for it to get fine-tuned and adopted. We'll get into that at the end of the presentation. The opens, well, before you go on, just for the sake of the viewers and the audience, the Open Space Task Force was formed to strengthen the preservation of open space areas and promote the protection of native habitat conditions, which include preserving precious resources to contribute to the health and overall quality of life, to ensuring open space is left in its most natural and least altered state so we don't get in situations where grading is considered still open space. The Open Space Task Force also wanted to look at maintaining outdoor recreational uses for preserved open spaces and limiting construction to promote safety and the character of the city. And there's other reasons. So, now we can go to the next slide. The current proposed ordinance, again, subject to any modifications from the public out of the workshops, prohibits development on any open space resources-protected lands unless there is a two-thirds voter approval, subject to limited exceptions. Development, the biggest part, the biggest change is that development is defined as any grading or construction activity, such as construction alteration or demolition of any structure, soil disturbance, change in density or intensity of land use, subdivision of land, except for permanent open space preservation, alterations in terrain or vegetation. These clarifications were essential to make sure that you keep the characteristics of your hillsides. And structure is defined as any building, road, pipe, drain, transmission line. It also will prohibit changing land designations from OSRP even to OS recreation. We'll get into why that's important. Next slide, please. You're ahead of me. The only exception is still if you have a two-thirds voter approval. However, two-thirds voter approval is not going to be necessary for the following public health and safety and welfare purposes. And the committee was very intentional with coming up with these exceptions. Development necessary to respond to a declared emergency or imminent threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Development in support of open space uses, such as fencing, trails, restrooms. Development for public purposes uses for lands owned by a public agency. Repairs, maintenance of existing utilities or nuances, abatements, activities. But any of these actions must first obtain two-thirds approval of the city council. So, there's still a level of control for the city council to make these determinations. Vegetation, removal of fire prevention, fuel modification as ordered by the Los Angeles County Fire Department or other public agencies. Development necessary to avoid overtaking existing vested rights or certain developments. And that's just state law, and you have to comply with it. Next slide? Thanks. The ordinance provides, also, the revised ordinance provides greater clarity on how to implement existing open space regulations within the code. It does so by clearly stating the objections, general plan open space element objectives to maintain an open space system that conserves natural resources, preserves scenic beauty, and protects public safety. This definition and the element objective being stated will guide courts in the future if there's a question about why, whether grading activity or something constitutes development. Open Space Element Policy Three, it limits development to avoid significant impacts to sensitive environments, such as woodlands, wildfire habitats, and riparian areas. Open Space Element Policy Three Five limits land form modifications and preserves ridge lines and other significant land forms. Public health, safety, and convenience limits development in areas of high fire severities. zones and allows for vegetation removal for fuel modification purposes. It improves the quality of life of the community, ensures maintenance of passive recreational use, and protection of important environmental resources. The Open Space Task Force also realized that the zoning code needs to be cleaned up so the ordinance can be most effective. So, the ordinance would change land designations affected properties located within the current zones in the OSRP to not ban such properties from performing reasonable maintenance. Currently, OSRP designations include land, land zones as OS open space. And I don't know if you want to put up a map. Do we have the ability to put up the map? Or if anybody has questions, then we can, you can or you cannot?
None, none.
Not here. Okay. Well, let me just read it then. Then, OSRP designations include land, land zone as OS open or open space, HM recreational, RC, RR, and PF, allowing residential and/or recreational uses. The designations would be changed to OSR recreational or RSF residential, single family, or HM hillside, mountainous, or RC rural community to remove them from the reach of the proposed ordinance. The question by the Open Space Task Force was debated as to whether this should be an initiative that goes to the voters in November or whether it should be adopted via ordinance. The recommendation by the subcommittee is to hold public workshops and multiple informational meetings with affected residents and property owners regarding the mapping, remapping, and rezoning to make sure properties affected are treated fairly. Because of that recommendation, it makes sense that this is adopted via ordinance, and after it's adopted via ordinance, staff can further refine the land use maps and zoning of affected parcels or in the process of the workshops. They can do that. And once all the language is refined, the proposed ordinance can be adopted, and ordinance can be submitted as an initiative to the voters later at a special or general election. And that is the presentation. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I'd like to start with our task force, Open Space Task Force.
Yes, I did have two questions. Michael, what is the total number of parcels that would be impacted by the zone changes that are being suggested or proposed?
If I remember correctly, I think we identified approximately 40 parcels that would have to be rezoned.
Just 40?
Approximately. And I do want to clarify that that was a draft list. We're going to continue looking through the land use map to confirm that we've picked up everything.
Now, if you had a single owner own multiple parcels, you're counting that as two, right?
Correct.
Okay. And some of those parcels, as I recall, were HOA-owned, correct?
Yes.
So, that that would actually, even though it's one parcel, there would be hundreds of people potentially impacted by a change.
Correct.
So, that it's easier, I don't want you to do it now, but when it comes back, I think it's, so it's easier for the public to understand how many people are affected. Maybe we could color those differently, like if it's an HOA-owned property, such as, I know there was one in Calabasas Hills, you know, you could, you could color it differently, and then we'd know that that impacts hundreds of people rather than just 40 different parcels. The other question I had was a technical one. Thank you for the report. Do you, do you, do you know if, when you say, so it can be adopted at a special election, but those are very costly, as you know, even if it's held in conjunction with another election, we have to pay the registrar recorder. But as I recall, there used to be options to do much cheaper vote-by-mail elections. Is this one of the elections under state law that is allowable under vote-by, vote, vote-by-mail and ballot only?
I actually did not look into that, but we can have that answer at the first workshop, but I did not research that. Matt, do you know?
They rejiggered most of the vote-by-mail rules in the COVID era. They made it easier. I just don't know off the top of my head if that would apply in this context, but we can certainly take a look at that. They did make it easier, though, so it may be able to be to vote-by-mail.
I recall a similar measure. It was a little bit different subject matter for the Santa Monica Mountains area regarding open space. It covered many jurisdictions. Long ago, though, that was done entirely vote-by-mail. So, I'd like that presented in the future as an option because it is much, much cheaper and more efficient to do it that way, and we might even be able to do it ourselves rather than have the county do it. My comment is that, you know, I really wanted to put this on the ballot this year, but in looking at, at some of the defects in the, in the codes with respect to how this would play into the codes, it wouldn't fit very nicely. And I'd rather have all the code changes done outside of an election cycle, not while the, the campaign's going on, so that people can have an assurance that their property interests will be protected. That way, it's a lot cleaner when you go to the public and say, okay, now everything's fixed, and here is what we're proposing to do going forward, so that people can be reassured that we're not going to, that their land is, it can be held in limbo pending an election. So, I am very reluctantly in favor of deferring this for now, but I do want to get that information regarding the special elections so that we may not have to wait two whole years for that to happen.
Absolutely.
And that's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you very much for that presentation. That was great. I don't have any questions. I would, are we going to do comments right now as well?
Sure.
If I can just throw a few thoughts out there, just to share with the rest of the council members. As we looked at this potential ordinance, we, we learned a few things. One is obvious that our general plan land use designations and our development code land use designations don't match, and they, they aren't a one-for-one either. So, something that's OSRP is most likely going to translate to OSDR, resource protection to development restricted, but recreation could go either way. And that's part of the 40 parcels that Michael has identified, that if we were to have gotten this ordinance on the ballot as a ballot measure instead, it would have just created a, a loop, not a loophole, but a conflict for us that we would have to deal with down the road. As we started looking at how to clear these things up with the amount of time, we started identifying other loopholes, which are subject to conversation. One of the ones that was brought up is it's possible, using our previous measure that prohibits changing for non-open space uses, we could change a parcel from development restricted to open space recreation, and then, once it's changed to open space recreation, it would not be covered by the ordinance that we have in front of us tonight. So, as we started trying to figure out how we could possibly get around this, and more loopholes became apparent, it just became the wise idea to, let's, let's get this into a workshop. Let's get interested stakeholders involved in the conversation. Let's get an ordinance together that we can all get behind that serves what we want to do, and we can pass that as an ordinance here at council. It's our goal still, and I'm 100% with Councilmember Bazzagian on this, that within the next two years, that we do get this out to the public for a measure so that this would have the two-thirds protection going forward, that a future council wouldn't be able to change this. We do want to preserve our open space lands indefinitely here. So, that is the ultimate goal. We just don't feel there's enough time to get that done before the deadlines for this upcoming election, or if we did, we don't believe it would be done perfectly. And we do note that, you know, in our last one, hey, it is not possible to change a parcel in Calabasas from open space to non-open space use, but apparently you can grade it. And I don't think any of us saw that one coming. So, you know, we want to, we want to really dig in deep here and make sure we find all of these things, and for that reason, for that reason alone, we're asking that this has further study.
Thank you, Peter. David?
Thank you very much for the report, and will the slide deck be available for the public as well? Because I know we didn't, okay, that, I'd like to make sure that's the case for, for us and the public for future. And thank you to the task force and the meetings and the work. I know there's a lot of work that's gone on this. We all want to protect our open space and protect it permanently as best we can, but to do it right is the most important thing. So, I do understand that, and I listened to the task force of both my colleagues' comments and already discussions, the questions I had related to cost outreach, which you've covered, has been asked already. Timing is the next part, which you've covered. And the only question I'll ask is, do you see any downside or objection coming to us moving forward in ordinance as opposed to the longer process right now or immediately with a ballot measure?
Are you asking me or staff? I, I don't-
Both. You're, you're there. Michael's there.
I agree with the task force. I think this is a solid approach for the city. There is no downside. The ordinance will be as effective as the measure would have been, and because the exceptions would still have to be approved by two-thirds vote of the council, you, the community has another layer of protection via this ordinance, and it will be fine-tuned as needed by the community input.
Great.
And if I could answer that as well, the other piece there is the primary difference between a voter-approved measure and a council-adopted measure is that a voter-approved measure can only be changed by the voters, but the present council, once they adopt it, would be unlikely to change it, so that risk is relatively low.
Understood.
Kindan?
I saw it. It's okay. Okay. And, and again, so I am fully supportive of this and appreciate the work and the recommendation, and I also am fully supportive of going forward in whatever the timeframe is in a couple of years to have this on the ballot properly as well, so that it would take a voter.
Yeah, and the plan would be within now plus two years. So, it's either especially if we can sort that out, or if else, the 26th election.
Right. I'm fully supportive. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Michael, thank you for all the hard work you always do, including this. And a special thanks for the task force. This is a yeoman's job. This was a work of love, I'm sure, but also, you know, looking for loopholes. We all do that, and the protection is wonderful. I mean, we are the guardians of the hillsides, and how much more can we do than what we've got here? I think it's very thorough, very complete. I read the whole thing. You were thinking out of the box and beyond, so I think the approach that we're going to be taking, I'm certainly in favor of a little slower, more thorough, and I'm sure councils in the future, if we don't get that in time, will support this as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ed, and I also support the recommendation of the task force, slowing down, make sure that we get it right, and, no, it's such an important item that I want to make sure that the workshops happen and that this is communicated very clearly to the public. But as Ed said, you know, it's our job to protect the open space. So, thank you to staff and James and Peter. Much appreciated. Kindan?
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of items, and back to the question that was asked to Ms. Sultani about the benefits of this, one of the things that we felt strongly about as we worked with the council members and then also the outside, or the legal council, both internal and external, was that there were, needed to be that outreach. When we're dealing with property and property rights and property issues, it lays the possibility of a lot of confusion or misunderstanding, especially when people hold so dearly their property and what that means to them. And we didn't want that confusion or any lack of clarity going into the, the voting of a ballot measure on this in November. So, this, this approach accomplishes that. The second thing I think I need to emphasize as a staff is it was very clear from the task force that they would like to see a timeline, and so we'll be coming back to the task force with a timeline of when we'll start holding these workshops, these meetings with property owners, when we then plan to have that to the planning commission and so forth. And so, again, we'll be working with the, the task force on that, but you have our commitment as staff to develop a timeline and then work towards that timeline to move this forward, so it's well-prepared for that.
Thank you, Kindan. Peter?
And if I could just ask you to clarify, the task force was hoping that this would continue on, not pause for a year and be ready for a two-year election. We're going to move this forward now so that we're, we're ready as soon as practical, correct?
As clarified, and that timeline will reflect that, that it is moving forward now.
Thank you.
And that was always my understanding as well. The other key is the education of the HOAs as well, because we have significant individual residents that would need to be educated, but also the HOAs.
And do we need to take a formal motion to direct the Open Space Task Force and staff to move forward with informational meetings and a public workshop in a timely manner?
No, consensus would be sufficient to move us forward.
Is there consensus?
Yeah, I did want to ask for, I was, had the timeline issue on my, on my list here too. Do you have, can you, are you going to post the presentation online?
I will. We'll, we'll share that with council, and then we'll have that added to the record so it's online for our residents as well.
And then, can we get a fully redlined version from the work we did?
The final ordinance?
Yes, the final proposed ordinance.
Sure. Absolutely.
Because I don't know that this one's fully redlined, the ones in the packet.
The one in the packet reflects the most recent discussion of the task force, plus the couple of further minor edits from the, the two sets of legal council, but we're happy to provide a further version.
Well, we'll email it to you.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, this has some redlining, but not the entire thing, so it'd be easier to, so when the public asks what's changing, I want to be able to just say, here's what's, what's changing.
That's a great idea.
All right. That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to continued business. Our city manager recommended budget for fiscal year '24 to '25 and '25 to '26, and this will be the second presentation, and our city manager, Kindan Meek, and CFO, Ron Allers, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I'll wait for Ron to come to the chair So, council, what we have tonight is a second presentation, a second opportunity to discuss the city's budget. We have a few slides that are repeated from our last meeting, and I won't go through those very much in depth. Thank you. So, Ron, if you wouldn't mind clicking on those for me. So, again, just as a reminder, the budget is the city's fiscal policy. We don't need to discuss that. We've talked about the fiscal resiliency. This is one of our strategic priorities, and that is a long-term strategic priority. This is something that is forward-thinking and requires effort to make sure that the, the city is fiscally sound, not it with, only with each budget, but long-term and thinking out. We talked about how the city has been very prudent and fiscally conservative in their efforts to make sure that deferred maintenance is taken care of, that in those years of windfalls of the sales tax, that we were able to use those funds wisely and appropriately and to meet that goal of fiscal resiliency. And then, we've also talked, just briefly, next slide, please, of just what we're seeing in some of these trends with declines in sales tax revenues over the last four quarters, general fund revenues increasing, but also seeing our expenses increase. And then, we talked just briefly about this 10-year forecast. This is, again, a snapshot of what we know at this time. There's a lot of variables that can change in this. There's different assumptions that go into this. Again, this is a, an analysis right now that we can prepare, just saying, looking ahead, there's going to be a shortfall. We all know that things could change immediately. We don't know. If we were to do this 10-year forecast six years ago, never, nobody would have ever anticipated COVID to be on that, that radar and have that huge dip in, in revenues and so forth. We talked about some fiscal resiliency efforts, and we'll share more of this next week in our discussion on a sales tax initiative on the June 26 meeting. And then, finally, we'll go into the general fund overview and the overall city budget review, revenue. Council, one of the things that we need to emphasize, and Ron will make this clear, is there was some direction provided to the council, to the staff at our last meeting that was done on the budget, that was on May 22. Those recommendations and requests are included in the budget that you have before you, and the numbers that you'll see reflect those changes. We have one more week before budget adoption, and so if there's any final changes, Ron is committed to staying late tonight to make those changes and get those into a packet for tomorrow. I committed Ron to staying late, I guess I should say. But with that, Ron, go ahead and please go into the presentation of the general fund and the city budget.
Thank you. Members of the city council, we've done some charts to explain our general fund. Our revenues in the general fund are, are basically supplied by six large revenue sources. Council is well aware of these, our property tax, our sales tax, our TOT, or hotel bed tax, our utility users tax, and so forth. So you can, you can see that we are diversified in our revenues. We're not solely dependent on sales tax, for example, or on property tax. So this is a good diversified portfolio of revenues for our general fund. So as different economic factors occur, happen, they partially only affect one revenue source or maybe two, and the other ones still carry the load to provide services to the residents. Our expenses, these are, these are broken down as well, providing basically any, any large equal distribution among a host of these, be it police services or different administrative services that we may have, be it finance or IT or, or media, as well as parks and rec and so forth. Here is our general fund overview. These include the changes that were requested at the May meeting of the city council, and I'll list those out for you in a couple of slides. I'll draw your attention to the far right-hand column. So these are the, the revised numbers, and as you can see, we have about $28.7 million in revenue, about $28.7 million in expenses. So with a projected or estimated budget surplus of, of approaching $100,000 for our general fund, which, so our, our budget is balanced. The changes that we made were we decreased sales tax estimate by $100,000, so now that is at 7.7 million. I'll remind the, the council that our revenue estimate for this year for sales tax is 7.5, so it's going, projected to go up slightly. We decreased hourly wages, so to take into the impact of the $100,000 reduction in revenue, we reduced our hourly wages by $65,000. And we also reduced our city clerk's contract budget by $35,000. And that reflects a change that we made this year from having a Apple One temporary staffing, and we actually have that person as a full-time employee now. So that's the, the change there. The general fund is balanced. Share staffing levels remain unchanged. Programs and services are consistent with prior years. It does not include what we had talked about last time with the, with the city council, a number of different projects or programs that the city staff deems as, that we recommend that we actually do. And I know that council is well aware of those, be it the millions of dollars in parks and recreation facility repairs, increases to our capital projects mainly for infrastructure and so forth. Our citywide budget overview includes the general fund changes that we just talked about and also a couple other changes, mainly in the, in the library fund, which I'll delineate for you. Again, the majority of the change happened in the right-hand column. You'll notice that the budget surplus or deficit is showing as 1.2 million as, as a deficit. What that is, is we are taking from our savings, we're taking from our bank account, if you will, and we are spending that on capital improvement. We are spending that on streets and roads, in the tennis center, on a new roof, as well as other facility repairs in the, in the tennis center. So we're taking cash and we're turning it into a, something that you can touch physically that will last for decades into the future, because we all know that we don't replace our roofs every year. Thank goodness, they're very expensive. I did one a few years ago. And so the, for example, the tennis and swim center roof is estimated at a million, a million and a half, and that needs, that needs to be done. So we're just turning this cash into investments. Again, we break out our citywide revenues into a, into a pie chart. The general fund is the biggest piece of this pie chart, but you can see, for example, at the very top, we have our gas tax revenue as well as other revenues, the transit revenues, our prop AC, measure R and M, as well as the capital projects for all of our transit services, as well as the major capital that we invest in on Mulholland Road and, and other roads in the city. Citywide expenses is also broken down for the, for the council. They, that you can see, all the numbers are, are backing up this as well, whether they be large public works, and again, this is our construction contracts. That's why public works is always so large, as well as parks and rec, because of our investments that we're going to do at the tennis and swim center, as well as our parks, as we are replacing playground equipment and putting in Brandon's Village and other projects in the parks department. Our changes that were outside the general fund from our May meeting is that in the library fund, we increased our full-time position count by one library technician. That was offset by a reduction in library hourly wages. So we have not much of a change there in the total budget. And then obviously, an increase in our full-time salary budget to reflect that change from, from the hourly. Wanted to give the council just a small breakdown of the projects. These are five-year numbers. This is in our five-year capital plan that is basically the last 20% of the book, that you can see each project has its own page, and you can look at that and see if, if there's a map associated, you can see where it is occurring in the city. Mulholland Road improvements is $12 million. That's from our transit funds. That is not coming from the city's general fund. That is our measure R and our measure M capital projects fund. Same way with the Green Street projects. Those are coming out of our capital funds from the transit. And then you can see our street rubberized overlay, $6 million. That's our annual gas tax money. The, all of these projects are non-general fund. They're all coming from our special revenues that the city receives either in grants or money from the county, or money from the state, or our transit funds. This is just a sampling of all the projects that are $1 million and above. We have a number of projects that are, are less than a million, but then I would go on for another five slides, and they're already listed in our budget book and I didn't include them in, in this presentation. With that, we are open for discussion and direction. I'll let the council know that next week at our council meeting, we will actually have the budget adoption, so that'll be the public hearing on next Wednesday. And then council will accept public testimony, close the public hearing. We will have whatever discussion and changes, if need be, from the council, the adoption of the budget, the adoption of the GAN initiative that the state requires, the adoption of this capital improvement program. We'll also have our new updated salary resolution to reflect a cost of living adjustment of 4% for the citywide full-time staff. And all of that is next Wednesday. And I'm here to answer any and all questions and, and thank you, council.
Thank you, Ron. I'll start with the budget subcommittee, Peter or David.
Sure, I'll go. First of all, thank you, Ron, for all of your hard work on this. It, it shows. It's a pretty hefty packet here. There's a lot of numbers in here. David and I have analyzed each and every one of them, down to the nearest penny. But seriously, I, I want to say thank you for some words that you threw out there. You, you mentioned regarding one of our numbers, it was in the red. And I love the way you phrased it. You said, "We're turning, we're, we're turning cash into investment." And, and I think that's an important way to look at any of our one-time investment monies where we're, we're putting a new roof on a facility or we're, you know, improving our playgrounds. We are taking some of this taxpayer money and using it to purchase assets that the community can use. And that's a good use of, of taxpayer money. As a budget committee, we don't like to see red numbers either. Red is bad. But the way I like to look at it is when we're looking at ongoing expenses, money in has got to equal money out. And the city of Calabasas has done a really good job of that. Our revenue and our expenses are fairly balanced. That's why our general fund shows, you know, an even balance, or actually a $100,000 surplus. And, and that's what your budget committee has really been focused on. When we look at the rest of the funds here in the city, and we do see that $1.2 million deficit, we've got to remind ourselves that all we're doing is we're spending the money that we saved to purchase an asset that will somehow benefit our community. And that's part of our job too. So I just want to say to my fellow council members, you know, when you see a red number, don't let it scare you, but make sure that we study it. And what we don't want to do is we don't want to have an ongoing expense that becomes unsustainable because we don't have an ongoing revenue to cover it. And we've talked about a lot of those things here. We've talked about adding sheriff's deputies. We've talked about earthquake insurance. We've talked about a lot of things that would be an ongoing expense that frankly, the city can't afford right now because we don't have an ongoing revenue to, to sustain it for a long period of time. And I just want to throw that out there and thank you, Ron, for phrasing it like that because it does help us, you know, understand as we look at these, this balanced budget, that, that our, our ongoing expenses are completely within balance. And these one-time expenses that we all wish we could buy today, we might have to kick that can down the road a little bit. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. David?
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat what Peter just said, and I agree wholeheartedly. I, I do want to thank you for the hard work on the budget, Ron and Kendon, of course, and, and Peter as well. It's important. I worked hard to get it to this point where it is balanced and we have a, about a $97, $98,000 positive number this year. But it was good work and the charts are appreciated, I think, from all of us up here, so that's also appreciated. But in general, it comes down to, and we've talked about this before, keeping our costs and expenses down and finding ways to increase revenue for the city so we can provide services and do all those things that we need to do. And you touched on briefly here tonight and Peter just talked about as well. I think we still need to find a way to do our best to consolidate or cut expenditures, and that's Kendon and you, leading the charge with us supporting where it makes sense for the city. And I've spoken out, I don't mean to be a broken record, but I don't think it was anticipated. It was a tough year, as you indicated. Four quarters in a row, having our sales tax go down is something I don't think the city's seen, at least for a very long time, if at all, at this point. And so future, while it's not certain, we rely on your expertise and the ability to bounce back or level off and bounce back in the coming year. But we still need to find better or additional revenue for the future in order to do the things we've talked about as a council. And as, as alluded to by Peter, public safety. The sheriffs, we want, we would love to have more support, more, more bodies. They aren't able to now, so what do we do? We've talked about other options as a council, at least for the short term. Emergency preparedness. We just showed the public at the emergency preparedness fair, our new emergency preparedness control vehicle for the city. That was just, just has been provided. That's a great asset for the city. That takes a lot of money. And whether it's deferred maintenance, whether it's, as you mentioned, tennis swim center, civic center is going to, at some point, need some work at some point, infrastructure, capital improvement projects. While the five-year plan covers, or is covered by measure A, measure C, whatever the measure may be, we still have to have the funds to do these things in the interim so that we don't end up with large red numbers. So I want to, and hopefully we will, find a way to increase our revenues for the city and primarily emergency preparedness, public safety. But thank you for a balanced budget. Thank you for the presentation. And yes, we spent a lot of time going through it and it's, it really is, has been a challenging year, I know, for both of you, as much as the council. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Ed?
Thank you. Budget committee did a great job. We've been busy between open space and the budget committee. Ron, thank you for all the hard work you've done. You know, it's, I think the two words that resonate with me and probably most people that are looking at city factors is sustainability and challenges. And we have both. We want to have a budget that's, that is sustainable. We also have capital improvement needs. We are growing. We've got cost of living adjustments that need to be made. It's a difficult task, what we've done, but here we are. We are balanced. We've got a very thin margin to work with. There is really no cushion. And, you know, if we were private residents, I think most residents would wind up dipping into their, their HELOC or borrow money against the house, hoping to repay it at some point. But the revenue stream we have coming in is so close to our expenses. The little seesaw is not got, there isn't a lot of room between the plus and minus, gosh, if something happens. So I know we've looked at every possibility here. We've looked at all the line items. So we're going to have to think strongly about finding areas and ways we can improve our, our opportunity to complete some of these capital improvements and deferred maintenance. And we're not talking about this year, we're talking about into the future. It's an important consideration. And I'm just glad we got to where we are for this year and we can continue the discussion. Ron, I do have a couple of questions. They're pretty simple. Most of them I've already answered, had answered, and answered some myself, but on page six, if you don't mind, for the general fund. The first item, the legislative and policy. Now that I'm on the advocacy committee for contract cities, we started off in '22 with $99,000, and then it leveled off at about 135, 134, 34 for the preceding years. Can you explain a little bit about where that money went?
Can you tell me which page six you're on, council member? Are you on the big budget?
The general fund expenses in my packet.
Is that the staff report, page six?
This one? Is it that?
Yeah. Staff report.
That one?
Yes, one.
Okay, great.
And you were looking at legislative and policy?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the increase in the legislative and policy, give me a second.
Yeah.
It's in the, it's in the dues and memberships.
That's what I think. Contract cities in the league?
League of California cities, League of California contract cities, all of those memberships that the, that are citywide.
Perfect. In fact, that's what I thought it was. Money well spent, because we contribute, as other cities contribute, in our all best interest. And one last one, the building inspections. Having been a resident, gone through planning and going through the department, getting codes and permits, but I don't see that as an expense for the city, as a general expense. Where does that apply? Because that's a big number.
Can you, I didn't quite catch that.
Building inspection, I'm sorry, 899,000.
So Ron, you want me to start while you're looking? That's on page six also, just on the general fund expenses. So councilman, we receive, as, as homeowners or developers or others come in and make those payments for the building and inspection fees, we receive those and then we pass those along to M6, who is our consultant or outside assistant with some of these building permits and inspections. So that is the expense associated with that.
Got you.
And we have the associated revenue on the revenue side. It's in the planning and building fees?
Thank you.
and make those payments for the building and inspection fees, we receive those, and then we pass those along to M6, who is our consultant or outside assistant with some of these building permits and inspections. So that is the expense associated with that.
Got you.
And we have the associated revenue on the revenue side. It's in the planning and building fees?
Thank you. The M6 is what I needed to know. Thank you.
Can I add a piece of information to that from the Budget Committee?
Sure, please.
The, the state law requires that money spent for permits for building and safety be spent on permits for building and safety. It's, they're a one-to-one ratio. One of the areas that we, we may or may not have additional money out there would be our planning department. And because our planning department not only reviews projects, but they do things like rewrite our general plan and rewrite our development code to keep up with state law and these sort of things. And the first part of that would be applicable to a project, and the second part is a city expense. And so one of the things that the Budget Committee has asked is for a review of our planning fees, which would include our building and safety fees as well, to make sure that we are recouping all of the money that we spend on projects for private entities here in the city. So that's one thing that we've asked them to look into. That's just going to take some time. So we expect to have that fully addressed by our next budget. And then, on a similar note, recreation and fees and how much fees for recreation offset the expenses for those. Again, we've asked for that study as well. Neither study is ready for this budget cycle, but we do expect both of them to be fully studied and analyzed before our next budget cycle.
Although I didn't bring that up tonight, I'm glad you did because we know that some of these functions are, are negative, and we expect them to be negative. We don't expect them to be positive. How much they are, it's good to know. And what the trend line is, that's a good thing to know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. James?
I don't have any to add. Thank you. I appreciate the work you guys put into it.
And I also just want to say thank you to the Budget Subcommittee, to Ron and Kindon and everyone that worked on this. My only comments are, I'm very happy that we have a balanced budget this year. But moving ahead, we have a lot of projects and things that we want to do for, for the community, especially related to public safety and infrastructure improvements and just long-term planning to keep our city, you know, what we all want it to be. So we're either going to have to make tough decisions, tough cuts, or really look for other streams of revenue coming in. So I know we're working hard on economic development, but it's just, we have a really unique city in how we, you know, how we're receiving our revenues and the breakdown. So I just want everyone to know, although we have a balanced budget this year, especially in terms of public safety, which is something that we all want to do more, more of. So those are my comments. But thank you again for the great job this year. Kindon, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at the same, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't need to take any action. The budget's coming back next week. Now we will move on to future information agenda items. And staff is looking for direction from the council on two items. The first one is city legislative platform. And Michael McConville is going to-
Can we take a break?
What?
Can we take a break? It's going to be a while.
I already told David no, but-
Oh.
No, 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 it's fine. It's fine. It's so early. No, 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 I'm not, if you both want to-
Five minutes.
It's so early, but sure. Five minutes.
Okay.
Five minutes. Yes, now-
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I just told, five-minute break. And we are back. I will turn it to Kindon to lead us off on the next two items, which is the city legislative platform and digital kiosk with security cameras.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is a new format to our, our agenda that we're experimenting with. If it works, we'll continue with it. If not, we'll modify. But what we're trying to do is, many times at the end of the meeting, there's a request for a future agenda item. And that motion is, or that request comes from a council member. There's a second. It's placed on the future agenda list without often further discussion or direction. What we've discussed, or staff, as we've met on some of these items, we've realized that we need more clarification and direction from council. We're not asking you to vote on items. We're not asking you to approve an item. What this does is it gives all five council members to provide a little bit of direction to help us move forward. And especially at this window where, after next week, we will not be meeting for another six weeks, six or seven weeks. And so this gives staff the opportunity to be working on some things during that July, early August break so that they're queued up in line for future action or discussion by the council once we return from that recess. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Michael to discuss the legislative platform, and then following that, on the digital kiosk with Michael Klein.
Thank you, Kindon, and thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. So on the development of the legislative platform, this was adopted to the future agenda items prioritization listing at the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. The primary bulk of time I hope to spend on this item is really receiving direction from the City Council. But I will go over just a few brief talking points to provide a little bit of background about what a legislative platform is and then what, again, specifically the direction we're looking for. The purpose of a legislative platform is to establish the City Council's positions on various legislative topics and matters of interest to the city and to provide a policy framework for city staff to respond to proposed legislation in a timely and efficient manner. Specifically, the statements outlined in the legislative platform are intended to assist the mayor, council members and staff to proactively and appropriately address legislation that impacts the city's interests. Examples can include correspondence from the mayor or city manager to the county legislator or even Congress, and collaborating when appropriate with the League of California Cities or our local COG. So to initiate that development, well, and, excuse me, let me back up. A few examples of a legislative platform are attached to the staff report. One from City of Westlake Village, one from City of Agoura Hills, and then one from our local League of California Cities LA County District. You'll notice some are quite simple. They're just a page, page and a half. Some, though, can be quite extensive, numbering forty pages long. So with, with that being said, and a little bit of background, what staff is looking for and the direction we're hoping to receive are really three things. One, guiding principles or priorities to be addressed in the legislative platform. So what would the City Council want this document to be, really? Two, desired staff and City Council coordination on the development of the platform, including consideration of an assignment to a subcommittee. So how will this document be crafted, really? And then the third point is the circumstances and the procedures for staff taking actions on items addressed in the legislative platform. So really, when and how will this document be used? And with that, that concludes, again, those talking points that I'm looking for. I'm available for direction and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. James, do you want to kick off?
Do you want to start with legislative platform? I've long thought that we should have a legislative platform of some type. I looked at the ones you provided from Agoura Hills. And what was the other agency? Westlake, right, sorry. No, and there was a league was in there, too. Yeah. So, you know, I think it, some of the things that were said in those platforms are a little bit general. And I think that's not quite as helpful. And what, one thing that the league does every year is it revises it annually to prioritize things and to adjust things according to what is relevant in municipal government at the time. Some of them will always remain there. I mean, the ones on local control, but maybe a little more specific. I think there could be some more specificity that we, that we allow for. I've also long thought that we really should get a lobbyist slash grant writer on retainer. And that would mean spending a certain amount of money just as a base and then spending more money if we have a specific project for them. The reason why I think we should have one is that, you know, we really do miss out on a lot of opportunities, I think, by not having one. It pays for itself over time. It's not that expensive to do this. The example I've given before, and I know you guys have heard it before, but I'll give it again. When the Community Center got the million-dollar federal grant, that, that grant was flagged by the Agoura Hills lobbyist as an opportunity. We would not have known about that if we weren't partnered with Agoura Hills at the time with the Community Center, because we didn't have our lobbyist in Washington, because we had no lobbyist. So for the cost of that lobbyist on a monthly retainer of a much, much smaller amount, a million free dollars. I mean, it costs really nothing to apply for the grant other than a small amount of staff time. I worked on it myself, and I know exactly how much time was spent on it. And frankly, you know, had it not been for their lobbyist, we would not have a million-dollar grant. So if you get one of those projects per year, or two of them per year like that, you see how well the lobbyist allows you to, to get that kind of money coming back into the community. Our taxpayers are paying through their tax dollars for this grant money. There's no reason why it shouldn't come back here. Grant writing, I know in the past, we've had individual departments do it. And so it varies according to the skills of the people involved and how aggressive they are and how knowledgeable they are to get the grant money. I think it would be preferable to have somebody who specializes in that, also on retainer, does not have to be a full-time city employee. I think that would, again, more than pay for itself. So in any discussion of a legislative platform, I think you have to include this as part of it because it's an integral part of it. And I, as I recall, and I think the five of us, when we, between the five of us, the lobbyist-grant-writer issue came out like right at the top with four of us. Wasn't that it?
That's correct, councilman. We have talked about lobbyist-grant-writer for a number of times, and it's still on the future agenda list. It just hasn't made it to a budget because of lack of funding to do so. Now, if the council would like to use some of that ninety-seven thousand dollar surplus that we have for a lobbyist, that would be, again, a priority of the council. We could do that. But the, the Budget Committee has not recommended that at this time because of the lack of funds to move forward with that.
Okay, because I think we need to discuss it like very specifically then because, as I recall, wasn't it four of us who put it at number one? And one person put it kind of low, so it wound up averaging a little bit lower on the strategic priorities. So that's, but that's exactly what I'm talking about. So if you spend ninety-seven thousand dollars on the lobbyist for a few years, or a year, whatever, and they bring in a few million dollars, you're actually not, not in a deficit. So your capital improvements, if they find the money to make some of these capital improvements, then it's a positive. So I wouldn't look at it as you're spending some of the ninety-seven thousand. I mean, we are technically spending some of the excess money on it, but we will never see the loss. In fact, we'll see a net gain theoretically.
We're convinced. You just tell us when is of, we just need votes to do that.
I mean, I would say it really, because it has been kicked down the road so many years, I would like to see this come back this year, not, it'll come back in the future and next year, whatever. When, when we come back in August, we're obviously going to have some things that we need to do in a timely fashion because we will have been off for July. But I'd like to see this before, say, before the end of September.
When it comes to my turn, I'm going to talk about it.
I'm done.
Okay. Peter?
Okay. First of all, I would have to say I am, I've been asking for a grant writer for a long time. I do differentiate in my mind the difference between a grant writer and a lobbyist. A grant writer is somebody who seeks additional funds from outside sources and fills in applications and administers those funds properly. Whereas a lobbyist, in my mind, approaches our state and federal legislators to influence pending legislation. Certainly, an individual could do both. If they're doing some grant writing, as James has suggested here, I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing that and doing that now. So I know that's not quite on this topic, but I would say you're looking for direction on this agenda item, which is a legislative platform. My first request would be, when you bring it back to us, bring back the options of hiring a lobbyist slash grant writer to implement this. And now see how I neatly tied those two items together here, as an option. For direction on the legislative platform, my suggestion would be interview each council member independently and find out what they want and don't want in our legislative platform. Make sure that you have in there that that's going to be a biannual process because as new council members are elected, you might find that our legislative platform will change over time. Make sure that we prioritize these things. Because, for example, if local control is important to me and housing is important to me, and a bill shows up that improves housing but takes away local control, are we in favor of it or not? So priorities are important, I believe, in a legislative platform. With that, I would say that, you know, you probably have a good sense of who we are already. But following up on some interviews, I think a subcommittee would be in order to, to review the draft as, as we get, you know, moving on this before it comes back to council. But the idea would be, if we had a legislative platform that reflected the overall majority of the council, especially the four out of fives, you know, the big overwhelming ideas, it would help me personally, as well as staff, because when I'm at the Transportation Committee, Public Works Committee for the League of California Cities, I often have to vote on things. And I'm voting on what I believe we as a city want. But having a legislative platform would really help me make sure that I understand what our priorities are so that I'm voting correctly. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. David, then Ed?
Thank you. I guess I only looked at this particular portion of it. I wasn't going to, and with all due respect to what I think is a future agenda item that is on a future agenda that we need to have and have a serious discussion about. I think legislative platform is a little different than another discussion about, we can tie them together, but a grant writer and a lobbyist maybe are two different things to me. I think this would, in answer to your questions, should go to a task force of some kind or, as Mayor Protem Crowe indicated, individually speak to each of us as to what we're interested in. But I still think a task force working with you would be a good way to handle it because, in looking at the examples you gave, as was mentioned, some are very brief, some are short, James mentioned, and others are much more detailed. And that's, that's important. We may, we need to find out what this council wants. And the other part, I want to be careful what our legislative platform is and, as mentioned, that it does come back because as the council, I don't want it to be, I'll say it this way, I don't want it to become a politically-used legislative platform, depending on the makeup of the council. I think that's something I want to, I think we, I would hope we all want to avoid. So whether we're going to include a lobbyist-grant-writer discussion, that's something I do want to mention. I want, because the council can change. The makeup can change. A few years ago, I would say the makeup of council was very different than it is now. So, or a number of years ago. And the views of the majority of council might have been very different than it is now. So, and the other thing is, I know we have league. Are we looking at collaborating with other or other entities to work together as well when we talk about our legislative platform, looking at the COG, VICA, SCAG, contract cities as their legislative views as well? To consider those if we're going to go into a detailed analysis? Because they're, they also work for us or should work for us on certain items.
Typically, once a city has adopted a legislative platform reflecting the council's preferences, we would then work with our partners to advance those preferences, those policy goals through our partner organizations. But I have not seen a council that would simply look for direction from other agencies on their own priorities. But I think once the council sets the priorities and the legislative goals, then those can be implemented by working closely with our partner organizations.
Right, and I probably wasn't clear in my comment, which is, we have these examples. Are there, have you looked to the other examples that I've mentioned for their legislative platforms to see if we, our COG, does it have a separate legislative platform? I believe it does. So it would be important.
Yeah, I think staff gathered a first set of examples, and we'll-
Right.
I think if this moves forward as directed by the council, step one will be pull every city in the COG. If any, I'm not sure all six of them have platforms, but all of them wants to have them. Same with the COG, VICA.
The more information, the better, I think. And I am supportive of this. I'm also supportive, as is mentioned, but I believe it's future agenda, of the item coming-
coming back to have a serious discussion on grant writing, uh, and, and other, whether it's lobbyist or not, that's up to this council. But I'm supportive of this coming back, and whether it's individual polling, and then going to a task force, uh, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Ed?
Yes, thank you. I love this discussion tonight. They're all different ideas, all trying to get to the same place. I've wanted to have a grant writer for the longest time. I was one of the four that would probably be at the top. I'm a little concerned about having a grant writer and a lobbyist at the same time. As I learned earlier, and I know we're part of the Contract Cities and the League, and, you know, they do a lot of this for us, so I'm not sure of, how that's going to work if we did align both of them, because they're not competing interests, but they're overlapping. So, I don't know if that's actually necessary. So, I like the idea about a subcommittee. I think there's a great value in that, that can vet questions from the community, other council members. I also have a concern that a council can be perceived as coming up with an agenda item, or support of something, that maybe the community is not in favor of. So, it doesn't necessarily mean this council, it could be a future council, and be a little rogue in their own way. So, there's got to be some kind of control mechanism, whether it's an open workshop, or something of that nature. We want to reflect what the community, uh, has a common interest in, and how we feel about it. That overlap part is, um, on the legislative and lobbyist, is the big concern. On the cost of it, the idea of spending the money that we really don't have, because of the narrow cushion we have, that if we, we've got to have some above our expenses for an emergency. But I agree with Councilman Buzajin very, very much, and that is, you can, by investing in something, and if the grant does come in, that's going to offset the expense that we would have had as a capital improvement. So, you're paying for it in advance. It's, it's like playing when you're a kid with a bow and arrow. You may not hit the target all the time, but if you keep on throwing arrows out there, you're going to hit the target. And it's not going to be, it shouldn't, it should pay for itself 10 times over, if it's done properly. So, I'm, I'm in support of a subcommittee, a task force. I like this idea very, very much. I have concerns about, um, the legislative mixing in. I'm not against it, but if you're asking for direction from us, um, those, one of the things I'd like to see, how we can make parity with that, and hopefully, uh, come up with some good guidelines, and we'll be off and running. I'd like to see when that day comes.
Thank you, Ed. I just wanted to add, at the COG meeting, people, the cities are always announcing the money that they're receiving through, um, different budget allocations, whether it's like state money or federal money. So, I know that we are missing out on a lot of money, and as a result of that, I've been advocating for a lobbyist for quite some time. I think some firms, we should inquire what our neighboring cities are doing in terms of lobbyist versus grant writer, because they are getting money. It's like, they're, so, they've been doing it for quite some time, as part of, like, their legislative platform. You know, it's like, they know what they're going after, and what bills to track, and so, that's how I'm tying it in, into this discussion. But I'm supportive of a legislative platform, as long as it's updated frequently, and it's very nimble, because things are changing. One thing I want to add is, at our COG, one of our cities will not vote on anything at the COG unless it's part of their legislative platform. And sometimes, new legislation comes forward, so I want to make sure none of us are pigeonholed by that. We all serve on different committees, and we entrust each other to make these decisions. So, you might, something might come up at one of our committees, and we're going to have to act on that. It might not be a part of this. So, I see this more to help, like, staff, and letter-writing, and things like that, and guiding us, but not, like, something so concrete. So, I support a subcommittee, but I would really love if you could reach out to our neighboring cities, in addition to, it was great seeing their legislative platforms to inquire about the lobbyist and the grant writer, and how it all comes together. Does that give you the information you're looking for?
Yeah, certainly, I think so. If I could consolidate some of the information, and I'm just going to focus on the legislative platform, not on the lobbyist-grant writer. I've heard from a group that there's an interest of this going to a subcommittee. Just so we're not, um, we don't lose time again, do you want that to go to a subcommittee that already exists, or do you want to create, um, that, for example, this could go to the Protocols Subcommittee? Could it go, it could be go to a committee of the mayor and the mayor pro tem? I just need to know, we just need to know where this goes, so we can move on this. What we don't want to do is delay.
I would, I would just like whatever, that we have the information that we've requested before the subcommittee needs, just of what the other cities are doing, so we can have that information.
That's a given, yes. We just need to know which committee we want to go to, if it's going to go to a committee.
I'm fine, I mean, if Protocols wants it, I'm fine doing it, mayor, mayor pro tem.
I agree.
I, I think either one, the mayor, mayor pro tem is fine. Is this a committee that's meeting, and then it's done after it's set up?
Correct.
So, it could be the mayor, mayor pro tem, that way it wouldn't change.
You good?
Sure.
Great. Okay. Easy. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will move on to digital kiosks with security cameras, and I'll turn to Michael Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. So, following the format from the previous item, staff is seeking direction on this future agenda item that was placed on the, on the list back in April. At that time, there was a request for the city to look into allowing digital kiosks with integrated security cameras at shopping centers. So, we took a quick look at our municipal code, uh, to find out what we would need to do in order to accomplish this goal. Right now, um, signs are all regulated under Section 17.30 of the Calabasas Municipal Code. Within that, it specifically prohibits any form of digital signage. And so, in order to accomplish something like this, we've outlined a couple of recommendations. The first one would be to consider, uh, per, consider an exemption to that prohibit, prohibition, and that exemption would narrowly define or allow for digital kiosks with, with security cameras. We also suggested that the council consider as part of this conversation, or part of direction, to look at other forms of digital signage that you see in other jurisdictions. For, for example, most McDonald's and Taco Bell drive-throughs will have digital signs. However, in Calabasas, they are not allowed to have that, so they have the, the typical just plastic frame with inserts in there. And that is because, when they have approached us in the past, we've had to either deny the permit, or just tell them they can't file for that application, because we don't permit any form of animated or digital signage. Similar with gas stations, more, most, more modern gas stations have the price signs that can be changed digitally. The signs here cannot do that. Within the suggestion, we also recommend that the, if the council wants the, wants staff to move forward, we would recommend that, through this process, staff would create specific standards for digital kiosks. That way, again, we narrowly define what would be allowed, and what would not be allowed. So, with that, I am open for questions, or available for questions, and ultimately, just seeking direction from the council on how to proceed with this particular request.
Ed, do you want to start?
Glad you called on me, because I have some question on the tip of my tongue.
Good.
And that question is, on the digital signage, how long ago was that, when that ordinance came down?
Most likely, right around 1998.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yes.
Things have changed a lot. I can see probably why, because the, um, trying to keep the sanctity of suburbia, most But my thought is, on the digital sign part, um, I'd like to see it happen in a shopping center environment. It's a little different than on the streets, and on the gas stations, and, uh, we're going to have, uh, Mayor Wayne Travel and I are on economic development, so I can see when businesses come in, we don't want to have the digital, I like the idea of suburbia look. But I think in a shopping center, it's a different atmosphere, it's more of a adventure-type atmosphere. Where am I going to go? What store? Where's my parking spot? So, that was the question I had, thank you for answering it. When it comes to public safety, I mean, we can't back off. This has always been our biggest expense, and the reason why, we're going to chase it until we can control it. So, um, I think it's a great idea. I know Captain C2, when we had the retail, um, task force meeting, and she's mentioned it many times, I've heard it before, uh, the geo fence, and that's, this is all part of it. This is a, an effort on every level, that we're going to try to find something to fight back. Like the little boy who put his thumb in the dike, you know, you're going to get some water coming through, but we've got to do the best we can. So, I'm, I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. David?
Um, I am with you. We both requested this discussion, so I am supportive. There, there's a lot of questions I have that would need to be answered. What, again, limiting it to certain locations being very important, height, size, and duration of how long the electronic sign would potentially be flashing, if it's flashing or changing, given our, depending on the areas, our dark-skY ordinance in the city, among others, to be considered. And what about other businesses in the city? How are we able to legally exclude them? As long as we are, that's fine, if we're talking about only shopping centers. And then the other question being applied, a future business or development, which could become, let's say, some type of center somewhere else in the city, how would this apply to them? And again, the key to this, to me, is public safety. It's, it's also good for business, we support business in the city, or we should, and I hope we do, but public safety, if it adds a component, public, to public safety, and to our residents here in the city who are using these shopping centers or, or business areas, then it's really, really something we need to consider, and strongly consider. I think after discussion, unless my colleagues wish to do something else, I would think this would be perfect to send to the Planning Commission, to get some parameters, guidance from them, unless it's just going straight to us. That would be it. Thank you.
Peter?
Uh, I think the word I've honed in on is narrow. I mean, I am, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. Public safety is very important. The security cameras within these digital signs are a very valuable asset, a valuable tool, that can be certainly tied into our Sheriff's Real-Time Crime Center. Uh, I think that would be a very important move, and we should move forward with it. As we look at the other exceptions, narrow, 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 I mean, I can kind of get on board with the digital menu at McDonald's, but I'm not sure I'm on board with the gas station signs.
I'm with you.
Um, you know, if you've ever driven down the 5 freeway through Commerce at midnight, you know what I'm talking about. I, I want it, I want it to feel like nighttime here, in the suburbs, when it's nighttime. So, I don't know if we can indicate, I mean, first of all, the height is going to be one. I mean, it's, you know, something that's, uh, over the top of our heads, should not be illuminated. I think as well, when we look at, um, digital signage, there's got to be a foot candle requirement. And whether that's measured, you know, on the sidewalk, or at eye level, or something, and, and I don't know how to write that. So, I would strongly suggest that we look into other ordinances from cities that are similar to ours, that may have already crafted some of this language. And whatever thing you can find to keep it super tight, so that we don't end up looking like the, the light bulb on the 101, I'd really, really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. James?
A couple of comments. I agree with Ed about the shopping centers. I think they can be handled a little differently. I had a couple, uh, suggestions, if, and I don't know if this is legally possible, but if the, if we offered the shopping centers a, an ability to do this with digital cameras, the kiosks, and then we made it a city implement, wouldn't that exempt it from any, from the code?
Generally, yes, if we were willing to do so.
Okay, so how, do we have an idea of how much that would be, if we offered it, and under, said, this will be at city cost to maintain public safety in quasi-public areas, which they are, even though they're private property, they're public, open to the public? We, we take charge of buying them and installing them, and then there's no, you know, we control the situation.
I, I don't have that cost in front of me. The direction from the council is to look into allowing this as something within the municipal code. That would be an entirely different direction. We could look into it, but I don't have the information.
Well, I like that option, because the council doesn't have that option in front of it, it'd be nice to have that option.
One of the challenge that could be solved, but is a potential challenge to identify with that option, is we need the property owner consent.
The what?
We need property owner consent.
That's what I just said, though.
Yeah, so, at the present, the proposal, we could offer them, and see if they consent. Right now, they're, the, the idea would be, we, oh, create this ability to have these digital kiosks, that they would then, in addition to public safety messaging, probably have some advertising, and use that to then pay for it.
Well, maybe, although I, I worry that if we do change the code, and we allow it, that there will not be the proper impetus by these property owners. And we're talking about some of these places that don't even report crimes that are committed on the property, because they, they don't, they just let it go. See, I, that, that mentality tells me they're not necessarily going to be jumping on this opportunity unless we give them some incentive. But I would like that option. The council is not approving it tonight or anything, but I'd like to see how much that would be, what would be involved. Another question I had for you, Michael, is, um, because the Commons operates on a conditional use permit, still, I believe, what, why would there need to be a code change?
The conditional use permit entitles specific uses that were previously approved. That doesn't exclude them from having to follow the municipal code requirements. If, in the future, they want to put up any new signage, for example, they still have to comply with our code requirements. The small exception is, if the conditional use permit granted specific exceptions, then we could rely on that. But you also can't approve a conditional use permit in conflict with the municipal code. So, the only way, other than for the city to install it, the only other way for a shopping center to install something that's not otherwise allowed, is to amend the municipal code.
So, we can't have a conditional use permit amendment that conflicts with the code, then?
And, and again, maybe another exception is, if a conditional use permit was granted, let's say, 20, 30 years ago, that does lock that, that particular right in. So, if the city changes its code down the road, they can still rely on that original conditional use permit. But here, at the Commons, I'm not aware of them having been granted this under any prior conditional use permit.
If I could state that for the public plainly, the code prohibits digital signs, without exception. So, if we were to allow digital signs at any site in the city, it would have to be an adjustment to the code to allow them, under rules and regulations structured narrowly. A CUP could not be granted to get around that prohibition.
Okay. That was, that was my basic, I understood what you said, I just, I didn't understand that to be the case. I'm thinking specifically of a sign that went up illegally on the Commons, that we said okay after it was installed, rather than require them to throw away the sign. But that's another, that, that's what led me in, led me into the thought.
Yeah, and that may be a, a prior history component there.
Yes. Um, okay, so those are my quest, my questions, and as far as my interest level, yes, I'm interested in having this go to the Planning Commission, if that's the ultimate question.
Thank you. I'm very, very interested in this. I just want to clarify, too, we're talking about digital kiosks. Yes, that's signage, but not like big billboard signage. Digital kiosks that have security cameras, and one of the, like, parameters for me would be that these cameras feed into the real-time crime center. Like, that would have to be a condition to me, um, and that it would just be our shopping centers. I totally agree with Peter about the drive-throughs, but I think we're focused specifically on kiosks relating to, with security cameras. I don't know if, like, McDonald's wants to put a security camera when people camera when people are ordering. I'll leave that to McDonald's. But I really want this to focus on kiosks, security cameras, and enhancing public safety throughout our community. And there's, you know, only so many shopping centers that this would be applicable to. So, I think it's a great starting point. I'd like to see this happen, get to the planning commission, you know, as timely, timely manner.
I have one other quick thing. As long as she mentioned the size, that only so many shopping centers, please consider the size. Like, the one at Old Topanga and Mahaland Highway, I would not consider it to be in the same category as the Commons. There, there's just a little row of shops.
Agreed.
And also, the drive-throughs, technically speaking, are phased, they're grandfathered in, but they're phased out.
They don't have digital signs, though. So,
Right.
And that is one piece of the direction that I am hoping to get. If it sounds like there's consensus to move forward with just the digital kiosk, but not wrap in the other concept, right, menu boards, and, and gas station signs, then we won't move in that direction.
I'm going to withdraw my support for menu boards.
Okay.
We'll focus on kiosks.
Yeah, like, just the kiosk. And I sent you a picture of what Culver City did, even though that was in the public right of way. I thought it looked really nice. So, I think a lot more, a lot of communities are moving in this direction. I sent to staff, Culver City just had to update their zoning code to allow this. So, in the public, they're doing it from the city side. So, do you have the direction that you need? This is exciting. This is a good one.
Yeah, this is a very good, positive.
This is good. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone.
It's a part, public safety partnership opportunity.
Right. No, it's great. Yeah. Our lobbyists, no, I'm just kidding. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to future information. Oh, wait, sorry. Let me back up. I think that worked really well, by the way. I don't know. Everyone else feels that way.
And what we'll do is, staff, is we'll try to hone in our questions on the staff report, so that specific direction that we're looking for is answered in that, or requested in the staff report.
Just going to make a better product, when it comes back in the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, moving on to future information, agenda items? David? Right. Okay. Okay. Anyway. I just have two quick things. We talked about the lawn mowers, and state legislation, and Curtis gave me an education on how it's like, there's back orders and everything. But I think we were going to get some information on the state legislation, when that was.
Yeah, we can follow up with that, for sure.
If we can follow.
And the state keeps changing.
But just, I know some other cities have already done it. So, I just wanted to know. It doesn't have to be like, it could be an email, or whatever, but I'd like to get that information. And then, the other thing I just want to follow up on, is that when we look at our calendar next year, about Juneteenth, since we got a lot of questions and comments about our meeting tonight, and just, we can look at that. I'll leave that to staff. That's just.
Well, are we talking about creating, I don't, I'm not in favor of creating a new city holiday, where everyone, city hall's closed. If we're talking about not having commission and council meetings, that would be fine.
Let's put it back. I just, we had this, it was a good discussion at the COG, about what some other cities have done, in terms of revising their schedules. I think it's worth, it's worth discussing.
But I'm just.
My suggestion, if I could jump in, it would be, the agenda item is all options before the council, and then the council can then make a decision from there, rather than decide now, to narrow the options. So, it's a discussion of Juneteenth, and holiday options. Bring that forward, with some information from staff, including what the COG, the other COG cities around are doing.
And staff has some ideas, too. But I, as a starting point, I don't think we should have meetings on a federal holiday.
Well, that, all of that will be on the table, what we do and don't do on that day.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, the agenda comes forward, has all the options, and then council can select.
Right. And I think when we look at our, we approve the city calendar, at some point. So, okay. Any task force reports?
We have a community center meeting tomorrow, just to let everybody know. Perhaps one of the last.
Peter?
Yeah, I'll just share that I attended the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting on Monday, and I was having afforded the opportunity to express the City of Calabasas' appreciation for the grant that we received, which helped pay for our emergency operations center trailer. So, was able to convey that to, to the committee, and.
Thank you. We also have a homeless task force meeting coming up, Friday. David?
And by the way, when you thanked him, did you tell him we could use another truck? Okay. I attended a number of SCAG meetings. One, finally got the data map book, which I provided the link to everyone for Calabasas, which is pretty detailed, and has a lot of information. I sent the link to everybody.
I know. I was wanting to save a copy.
And then, I attended legislative communication and membership committee meeting, where we had a number of speakers from Sacramento, and they asked for a letter of support. I provided it to Kindon, and to the mayor, AB 2485, and Scott, who wrote a great summary on it. But that letter needs to go out by next Wednesday, I believe. And since it's, it may or may not make the agenda, then I, I'll just do an independent letter. But it's, I think, a very favorable, and it's passed unanimously, moving up the ladder so far. I don't know if you want to discuss that.
Yeah, Councilman, as we looked into it as well, you're right, the June 26 deadline to receive those letters, didn't allow us to put it on tonight's meeting, and then it's after the fact, next week. What we'll do is, Scott provided you and the mayor some information. We'll share that with the entire council. So, those of you who would like to do an individual letter, we can help draft that, or create that, for your signature to be sent on.
And I also sent a follow-up draft letter from SCAG, if anybody, or other, a lot of other cities all across Southern California have joined in. Tomorrow morning, and I know Peter is, I think, Friday, our lead policy committees are meeting. So, mine's tomorrow, and I know we have American Bloom, and Alicia will talk about our other meetings. So, thank you.
Ed?
Yeah. And we are busy with American Bloom. I'm happy about it. I've got two meetings that I'm very excited, looking forward to. I've got a retreat with the Queen Power Alliance on Friday. Going to USC. I haven't been there since our oldest one graduated. But it's going to be a very comprehensive. It's going to be about four and a half, five hours. So, now that I'm a director, you know, it'll, it'll be even more enjoyable. And the advocacy is going to be on Thursday, with the contract cities. So, looking forward to that. It's a new role for me, both of these, at this level. So, I'm very excited to participate, and bring back information that I've learned from, from both of those, to the council.
City managers' report?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn to our regular meeting on Wednesday, June 26, and that meeting will be taking place at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much.